I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the regular session of Goldendale City Council for January 19, 2021. Connie, can you say the council or can you give us a roll call as best you can?
Julie? She was on there, she went away, oh, there she is.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Lauren?
He's out and he's, we'll need a motion to excuse Lauren.
Okay. Kevin?
I'm here.
Shannon? Andy?
Here.
Phil, I see you. Myland?
Here.
Okay. All but one.
We've, we're contacted by Lauren Maynor, our seventh councilman, that he would not be able to be here for work reasons tonight, and we need a motion to excuse his absence. Can we have a motion, please?
There's Myland, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Myland, to excuse Lauren Maynor from attending the regular city council meeting for January 18, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We don't have a public hearing tonight, but under agenda, we have an amendment we want to add to the agenda. And this would be to cover a capital outlay request from the Goldendale Fire Department. It's in the 2021 budget already, it's been approved by the council and by the budget committee for the, a command truck, a pickup truck that would be used by the fire department. We need a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda as requested. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with amendment and the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda that we have is the department reports, and we'll begin with Chief Hensiker from the Goldendale Police Department.
Over the weekend, the holiday weekend that we just had, there were two incidents which both resulted in arrests or non-related, which ended up in robbery second degree charges on one, along with theft second and DUI. Then there, the second one was on Monday. Again, it's a robbery second degree. There were no injuries. These robber second degree is when property is taken from one another by means of threat of force or some type of force. There's no weapons used, but on both situations, arrests were made almost immediately after the incident was reported to police, and they're, they're sitting in jail now. So the officers did a great job on that. Again, these two, but they're not related whatsoever. With the events taking place tomorrow, I've been watching a lot of emails coming from Waspick. Right now, we know Washington state has no threats made against them. Not to say anything can't happen in our state, it's just that we have no intel on that, at least any information I received. So, and especially this area, we're not expecting any problems, but we're ready for a call for help if anything does occur.
Certainly.
So we're doing good. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, very much. Is Noah Holm on for Goldendale Fire Department?
I'm here, Mayor.
Would you give your report for the fire department?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you guys last year's numbers. I didn't make it to the first council meeting, so, of the year, so I apologize about that, but, so, for 2020, we had a total of 211 fire calls, 85 being EMS related calls and 126 being fire related calls. So that's, that's a pretty big number for us. Normally, fire calls in general, since I've been chief and I was talking with Marty, it's always been around 100. So to have 126 is quite amazing, actually. So we're always pushing to get to 100. The other thing that I want to bring up is, I think I brought this up a couple of months ago, but, but our, our response times, which, which are really huge. So an average time for, response time, which is dispatch, dispatch time to arrival time is 10 minutes and 16 seconds. And then the other one that, this one really shocks me, is average turnout, excuse me, turnout time. So that would be dispatch to in route time, and that's five minutes and 48 seconds, which is huge. We're, we're all volunteers, so, you know, you wake up in the middle of the night, you gotta get dressed, whatever, get to the fire hall, scrape your ice off your windows, whatever you gotta do. Five minutes is, is pretty huge, so. I, we've got a really good fire department and firefighters here that really do the, do a good job at doing all this stuff, so.
That's excellent.
Sorry, Mayor, that's, I, I'm done, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Noah, very much. We have the representative from Public Works, Doug Franton.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just have a few things with Doug, John, saying with the recent, I think this.
Uh-oh.
Land, uh, low on.
We can't understand you. We can't understand you, Doug.
How about now?
Better.
That's better, so far.
Well, I'll try it again. So with the recent rain and land really bad, we've had a lot of downed limbs and debris in the roads, we've been doing a lot of sweeping and cleaning that stuff up. We've got a few banks of our streetlights that have went down, for some reason they changed schedules. I think that we have that issue resolved, so all the streetlights should be working. If they're not, people can call City Hall. We've also been trying to get the school zones signed, stored away, along with the police department. They're kind of getting old and outdated, but we're hoping to have those operational soon. And then we've had a pretty big uptick in water and sewer, or new water and sewer services installed, and that's about it.
That's a lot. Thank you, Doug, very much. The next, the next item is land planning, and I believe Justin Lee is on the line. Justin?
Yep. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, all right. I wanted to give a few updates about what I've been up to and what, what's happening on the city side of things. The first topic would be land use related matters. We have a site plan application, the notice of application just went out this week. It is, the applicants are Ben and Karen Perez, who own the taco truck, and they are proposing to make a mobile food vendor court of sorts, which is just, just east of Pioneer Surveying on Simcoe there, on the north side of, of Simcoe. So the SEPA went out, there were no comments that came back, now we're doing the notice of application, so people can comment on it. The application, the site plan application is, is available for review if anyone is interested. So there's a couple of weeks of, for a comment period on that application. And I, and so I think we're, we're excited, you know, that they're planning to, you know, if this is successful, to move the taco truck there, and I guess they purchased that, the other, the diner truck, and they're also proposing to have a coffee truck there as well. So it could be a nice kind of mobile food pod. And this is kind of a popular model. I've seen it in Portland, I've seen it in Bend, and it's especially popular these days with all the kind of social distancing and outdoor seating requirements. These, these type of businesses are doing really well. So I think it'd be a great, great addition, a nice, they're, they're proposing a really nice development there. The second thing is our, the subdivision proposal, which is called the Highlands subdivision, it's down on 18th Street. The SEPA comment period ends tomorrow. We only received one comment, and it was from the Department of Ecology. That actually came in late this afternoon. It's pretty inconsequential, so we feel pretty good about that, you know, they're not finding that there's any sort of ecological reason to hold this up. So once we get through the SEPA comment period, we'll proceed in the next steps of, of that process. Which kind of leads into the, the next topic, which is, we at the city, we have what's called a planning commission. It's a board of appointed officials that oversee subdivision proposals, they oversee rezones, and they also work with the city on comprehensive planning. And we are seeking people that might be interested in being appointed to that role. We have a couple, a couple people in mind, we're looking for potentially one more person. The requirement is that they have to live in the city limits, and hopefully they're, you know, interested in these planning related, community development, economic development related matters. So if someone is interested in that, they should please reach out to Larry or myself. And our goal is by, hopefully by the next meeting, or at the very latest, by the second February meeting, to have appointees for the council to review and approve. So that's on the planning commission. Kind of similarly, of course, we put, put our request for proposal out for the comprehensive planning consultant, that was, that was approved in the budget. The deadline was the 15th, and we're in the process of reviewing the proposals, and we also hope to make a recommendation to the council by the next meeting as well. In other news, there's a lot of, you know, the, the changing regulatory environment is constant, and it's hard to keep up on things, but in terms of the kind of hospitality industry, which I'm also kind of, you know, a part of as a brewery owner, they have created a whole new set of phases that were, but one of the things that they've allowed for starting this week was for some open air dining, which would allow restaurants to be at 25% capacity indoors if they have the proper ventilation. So, you know, open the windows and the doors, sit inside cold, but at least you could be inside. And kind of part of that, we at the city have developed a temporary permit that's allowing businesses to have a, an outdoor tent. So we kind of rolled out the first temporary permit with the Dirty Cowgirl. And I, I wanted to kind of tell everyone that we're, we're doing this temporary, you know, tent permit. We request that if you're interested as a business owner to please come to the city, we, we have paperwork for you to fill out. There's no fee, but we still want applicants to have certain paperwork on file because we are, Jeff, Rayleigh, the building inspector, and myself, we're sort of custom tailoring the different permits, because everyone has their own tents, everyone has their own site plan, and so it, there's no one size fits all approach, but we are here to work with business owners to, to make sure, you know, they, they can get some people for, you know, the closest to indoor dining as possible right now, to help them get through this time. So I would caution people against just erecting tents without talking to us. We, we really want to make sure that you have the, the right setup, you know, make sure we're protecting the public's health and safety is our first and foremost concern, you know. So I would just want to invite business owners that want to figure out a tent solution to come and give us a call. We can be there same day, and, you know, hopefully within a day or so, get this permit and figured out. In other news, I've been working on a couple ordinance updates with our ordinance committee, and we want to schedule a meeting, maybe we can do that after I, after I talk a little bit. We have an, an updated fenced ordinance that we wanted to present. We actually want to have some rules regarding food trucks on the books since we don't have any. And there's a few other minor things that we wanted to address. Me, and what I'm doing, and I, I'm embarking on a community development block grant application for our wastewater treatment facility. There's, you're gonna hear more about that in the coming weeks and months. And then as far as kind of the last thing, which is code enforcement, we had a, a property on South Grant Street that we sent out for bid to be demolished, because it was sort of the end of a very long code enforcement process. That property has been demolished, and so that's a, it's a good step in the next, you know, in the right direction. There's a few more things that we need to do to, you know, secure our interest for payment on that property, but that's a, that's a really good progress on that. And next month, we'll probably, we'll be having another board meeting, Citizen Review Board, and Jeff, and I plan to have some new code enforcement cases at that time. So anyway, that's kind of like overall what, what I've been up to. I talked to a couple of council members, they want me to make this a more regular thing of giving department updates, so we can expect that in the future. So yeah, if anyone has any questions, otherwise I don't know if we want to work on figuring out a ordinance committee meeting, maybe for sometime in early February. I, you know, I know Lauren's on that committee, and so is Filberto and Myland, you know.
And Justin, this is Myland, anytime would, would work for me.
Okay. Um, I don't know, I wish, you know, we could, we could do it on an off week, you know, a Monday, a Monday night, like Monday the 8th at 6:00, tentatively. How does that sound?
This is Phil, Mondays are tied up for me.
Okay.
Tuesdays, Thursdays, I think are best, but we can discuss that later on, too.
Do we want to tentatively say Tuesday the 9th at 6:00? And if we need to adjust it, we, we can do it as we get closer?
I'm good with that.
So I guess I want to make sure, you know, so we, we have some, you know, how, how much time would the committee prefer to have, you know, to review everything in advance? Like a week and a half, two weeks? More or less? I want to make sure we're getting everyone drafts and materials with enough time to review everything, so we can have a, you know, productive conversation.
This is Myland, I would say a week is, would be enough for me. Yeah, I'd say at least a week.
Okay. All right, we'll make sure we, we do that. And, okay. Well, that's all I got. Does anyone have any questions for me regarding any of those things? Is there anything else?
Thank you, Justin. Council, any questions for Justin Lee or land planner? If not, we will go on to council business. And the item under council business is what we invented the agenda for, has to do with capital outlay for a, for the fire truck, for a fire, fire chief's pickup.
Okay, so we got information that they were going, that Columbia Ford, who is the state bid holder for trucks that will service as a fire command truck, that they would only honor their 2020 prices through January 20th, or until January 21st. Columbia Ford holds a state bid contract, and, and the fire department wishes to purchase a fire command truck that is listed on that website for use by the fire chief in the, in the fire department. The funding will come out of a public safety capital outlay, and it's been approved by the budget. We are, we apologize for not getting in till late, but they just found out that a few days ago that it was, that the pricing was gonna go, was gonna rise, and so they want to take advantage of the current pricing. The total cost of the truck with, with all the alternatives chosen is $42,551.34, and it's gonna come out of the public safety reserve fund. And Chief Holm, are you available to add to that in any way?
Uh, yeah, Larry, I'm, I'm not sure what, what you want to add it, but yeah, it's, it's not gonna be a replacement vehicle. It, it's gonna be a vehicle, an extra, an added vehicle for several different purposes, but, but the fire department would sure appreciate it.
So we would recommend the council pass a motion to allow us to, to obtain the necessary paperwork to order this capital outlay purchase from Columbia Ford in the amount of $42,551.34.
Larry, this is Andy, I will make that motion.
This is Shannon, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve purchase of a, of a pickup truck to be used by the Goldendale Fire Department as a chief's command vehicle. The price is $42,551. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
We have? All in favor, sorry. Are there any questions also?
Real quick, Adam, or Noah, is, do you have room to store this?
Um, yes, we do. This one will be at myself or Stephen Randall, the assistant fire chief's house, this will be our, our responding rig for command and, and that sort of stuff. The other vehicle that will be parked at the fire hall, we do have room for it. And it, that, the, the one that, the one that goes to the hall is gonna be more like a crew transport, when we have like medical calls, we have extra people down here at the fire station, they'll take that. It's a 2008 Ford Explorer, so it'll save, you know, maybe not so much on fuel, but it'll save the big fire engines from going out.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, Mayor, it's Kevin, and absolutely, we, we need to support these people, you know, every dry season, we, we rely on them to save our town and save the towns around us. So I am absolutely for this, 100%.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any against? Motion passes. The next item is a report of officers and city administrator, and we'll begin with city administrator Larry Bellamy.
I wanted to continue on with some key upcoming dates. You don't need to necessarily write any of these down. I will send a copy of my memo that outlines the dates that are upcoming. First of all, I wanted to start talking about the tourism application process. We've done this for several years, it seems to have worked fine, and it usually is application, presentation to the event committee, recommendation to the council, and a resolution to adopt the funding for those people that have made application to the process. In 2020, however, things got a little bit different, difficult. In 2020, we actually canceled community days, and we did not fund anything related to that. GMA was not funded that year, nor was the entertainment through the junior chamber. We didn't put up a bouncy house, we didn't have a beer garden, so all of community days was, was canceled. But there were still some monies that was, that were being distributed, like through the chamber, they took a pretty large chunk of money, to the tune of about $31,000, but they still had ongoing needs and support for the city and for the visitor information center. And so we still distributed money to that cause and the farmers market and the Christmas parade. So those two still went on, and so we estimated that we spent about $37,000 still in 2020. The, in the past few years, we've distributed about $55,000 to $60,000, and that was pretty close to what was received in revenue from the lodging tax dollars. In 2020, however, we had funds from the lodging tax revenues, lodging taxes, that came back to the city to the tune of only $40,000. So we kind of were waiting for all of those monies to come in, and we finally got the final numbers in December of this year, and so it ended up being about $40,000. We do, however, feel that we still need to go out for a call for projects, we need to find out if people are still interested in utilizing this money, but it, we need to realize that it is gonna only be $40,000. While this seems appropriate, it's gonna make things a lot more difficult to assess and to decide how we should move forward, but I think it's a necessary step to make it fair for all. And so on January 20th, which will be tomorrow, we do plan to send out a call for projects, and we'll send it out, send it, send it to all those entities that applied last year, as well as advertised for any new proposals. On February 10th, we were hoping that we could have all the applications in, that gives us about three weeks. And then on February 17th, which is a Wednesday, we were hoping to have the applicants make presentations at, at an event committee meeting. So, and then finally, on March 1st, the event committee would make a presentation to the council on how they came up with their, their recommendation. So I'll come back to that at the end, and we'll talk about whether or not the event committee can meet on February 17th, that's a Wednesday, I believe. Maybe I should double check that. Is it?
Larry, I have a question on that.
Okay.
With COVID being what it is, and we're still hopeful that, you know, life can go on and we can move forward, and so we're not sure on events and all that, how that's gonna change, but would these funds be available to apply towards like downtown revitalization?
Revitalization?
Yeah, to, you know, for shops and places like that, to kind of... Yeah, to, you know, for shops and places like that to kind of give a facelift to their businesses and kind of keep it going as, as, you know, everybody struggles. But would this be available for kind of like a block grant or something like that to say, you know, a paint job or?
I'd have to double check, but one of the main things that the state in the law that they passed was that it would support tourism that created heads in beds. There are people staying overnight at the motels and thereby replenishing the lodging tax dollars. Because the lodging tax dollars comes from the motels and we want to encourage activities that create heads in beds. And that's it.
Right. The only thing with the state saying to everybody, don't travel.
Right.
I'm not sure how that works, you know, but I think we can at least get our shops ready to, when people are traveling again, to say, you know, come on in, we're open.
Right. But again, I'd have to double check on that. I know there is a program called the Main Street Program through the Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. There is that program that's available through the state. It's quite, quite an involved process, but that, that money certainly could be used for what you're talking about.
Sounds good. It'd be good to hear back so that if the events can be
Okay.
if the events can be held, at least we can utilize some of those funds for improvement of our town.
Right. And then I'm gonna go ahead and finish off my report with a couple, a few other dates. January 25th, which is next Monday, we have a special session planned that is an executive session on union negotiations. Then the next council meeting is February 1st. That's on a Monday. And we hope to have, we hope to have a consultant agreement for engineering services for the alley project behind Clickatuck County Administration Building. And we also hope to have a consultant agreement for engineering services for the buyer street improvement project that will include water, replacement of the water line and the streets, street reconstruction and sidewalk on one side and curving, as well as storm drainage. So those are some coming up.
What time for the special session?
Well, the special session is at 7 o'clock. And then, again, we talked about February 9th, which is that next week. That's on a Tuesday. So that's, that's a tentative meeting for the ordinance committee. There's a regular council meeting on the 16th. And then finally, a special session, another special session on February 22nd, which will be a training with WCIA, which is our insurance, Washington City's Insurance Agency Authority, I guess. They provide liability insurance to the cities. So this is a training by the executive director on council dos and don'ts from a liability perspective. And then the last thing I want to report was that the airport fuel system, the turkey fuel system, part of the airport improvements is out to bed at the present time. And I'll update you more on that at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We'll now hear from city council members, and we'll begin with Mayor Protem, Andy Holm.
Mayor, Andy, I don't have anything. May-
Okay, thank you. Phil?
Mayor, I do have a few things. So let me apologize to everybody. It looks like a short agenda. But I have a couple of things. So just wanted to follow up on discussions that, from previous council meetings. And wondering if we can get a report from staff on all the attorney fees that have been paid out in 2020 and 2019, what those were for and to what attorneys. It seems like for a city, we have way too many attorneys and looking for more attorneys. And again, my previous experience with city attorneys is that there was one city attorney that handled all on staff as a paid employee. I'm just curious to see how much we are paying out on contracts and also on hourly services, just for a question. So if we can get that, I think that would make my job as a council member a little more responsible to the citizens fiscally. Then I have, along the budget lines also, the more I, you know, been on council a little bit longer now and understanding more and along the same lines of fiscal responsibility, I would really, really appreciate if we can break away the budget from the council agenda. I feel that that needs to be a thought out decision to approve the budget each time because it is essentially council members that are responsible for approving that, regardless of what it is. And having approving that agenda every time, it's kind of like a free pass and everything else that's attached below it. And I think that's a little irresponsible on our part to continue with that. You know, we approved the agenda tonight and I totally forgot, I've done this again before, where I forget that it's all included all the items below it. And I had some questions on the budget. But once again, I'm the one that made the motion and forgot that it was all together. So I would really urge, just like I did before, that that action take place. I don't know how the other council members feel, so I'll leave a little space if anybody else wants to comment before I move on to my other item.
And Phil, it's Kevin. I have no issue with relooking at ways to save the city money and ways to better spend it. So no, I got your back on that one, Phil.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. But with that being said, the other item that I would appreciate is having an agenda, or I'm sorry, not an agenda, the budget. We see the items getting paid and I see the payees by name, but I don't know what department applied for that. I don't know what budget item number that is under. So as we continue approving, you know, were they, were they listed to continue spending out of this budget item or is that expended? Does money need to move from one budget item to another to make up for that? And again, that is, that is numbers that we just continue approving blindly. And I think that has been a disservice to the citizens that we serve. So if we can get a budget listed by item number, by department, and what that expense is for, that would be great. Again, I'm open for discussion if we need to put it on the next agenda. As a motion definitely, don't change, don't change it on my account alone. I just feel that at least a little more as I'm getting more to know my job as a council member, you know, only after a couple of years, I think there's a little more responsibility that we need to take for that, especially, you know, we're voting for these items. So the buck stops with us. It was truly buck, by the way. Okay, so the other, so that's, that's there on fiscal items. I do have several, several items to ask for on the service to our citizens. So I'll start on the bottom of my list. I made, I made a list. Sorry, I apologize. So one of the items I had heard from a parent here in Golden Dale, he was sharing concerns that he was at Econie Park and him and his two children witnessed what appeared to be a drug deal going on right at Econie Park. People came out of the RV park and people came from the parking lot, met in the middle, two adults meeting in the middle, going to pay. Which some of us would recognize that behavior of somebody being under the influence of drugs is a little different than being under the influence of alcohol. Obviously, he reported it to law enforcement. However, while, while we support the police department and everything they do, they can only do so much when they get a report. Call comes in and they act on that. But we know, a lot of citizens in this community know that the RV park near the, Econie Park is a questionable place. It's a place of ill repute. It has a reputation for having excessive unlawful activity, to say the least. Not all residents there participating in this. There, you know, there's just a few people that continue doing unlawful activity. And it, it just, it just bothers me and I don't know what else we can do. I had heard at some point in the year or so, I don't know if this has changed, management did not even allow our law enforcement to patrol that area, citing that it was private property, which is fully their right, however. So I'm not sure if that changed or not. So I feel like there's something needs to be done. I know code enforcement, there was some code enforcement issues and that needed to be dealt with. There is car shops, like basically a car shop running out the back that was on full side of, from Econie Park. So I'm not sure what else we can do to increase law enforcement around the park, to increase security, to handle that kind of thing and really clean up our account from our, from drug activity. Not just the users, but, you know, these people making it a business to bring more criminal activity into our account. And, you know, I'll just make a plea right out that I would hope and invite myself as a private citizen for the Washington State Department of Ecology to come and look at that area that is in close proximity to one of the rivers that feeds into Columbia with, would be such a huge ecological impact. If stuff continues the way it has been, you know, fixing cars, taking parts apart, vehicle parts under dirt, who knows what else? So I'm not sure what else we can do. Definitely, you know, that's a law enforcement matter and I think police chief can totally handle that just, you know, bringing it to attention that it continues to be a problem. And unfortunately, you know, it's one of rest at a time most of the time. And they get out and go back to their thing, so. Next, so I'll leave that one alone for now, but definitely we need some attention. We need some code enforcement. We need to partner with the property owner, the management, and just move forward and try and clean up our community there. Definitely support the law enforcement side on this to whatever legal means they need to take action on. I'm open for it. The other side is, I know from the fire perspective, it was in question about the code enforcement, the code for how close parking spaces or RV parks and homes are brought in. I noticed that they brought in more. Some of the larger ones have gone, but again, I'm not entirely sure that the space in between those are, is kept up to code. So we'll have to, we'll have to follow up with that. And again, whatever support, law enforcement needs, law enforcement needs, or the Fire Department, if there's a Fire Department function that they need to enforce on that. Okay, so on the law enforcement side again, the only thing I would ask is if we can, if we can increase the coverage hours without going too much detailed. I don't know if we can look at a report or plan. Maybe they can come up with a plan to increase coverage hours to cover more of the days with the best kind of coverage that they can and increase their productivity and just get out there and do their thing, right? I know they're always doing, but if we can increase those, that coverage, that would be great. I know with limited staffing that we have, we can only do so much. But I think, again, that would be up to the chief to see if that, that can be done. Again, another item for providing service to our citizens. I've asked for this before. I know there's different times where projects are larger and require more people. And again, we don't have the people. But if we can provide additional coverage for public works, providing coverage for our citizens. They all work on one side of the week and everybody gets the same days off. And if something big happens, then everybody gets called back out of overtime and lose their days off. I think coming up with a plan on providing coverage, having some people on different shifts would be great. If we need to call additional people for an emergency, you know, not everybody's losing their days off. They're getting their days. If we have snow on the weekend or towards the weekend, we have some coverage. You know, different plans like that, just so that we can provide that much better service to our citizens. If a water pipe breaks, you know, there's somebody down at the shop during the day that can come out, you know, on a Friday or on a Saturday. And again, not, not my, not my role. And that would be up to each department manager to see if that's possible and come up with solutions. Just asking for us to be able to provide a little bit more service to our citizens and be available for their demands. And then the last thing I just want to follow up on, let me know if I lose you. I did make notes, so I can always email those notes to anybody. So following up on a big one, and this one, it made it difficult for me because as you guys know, I'm also a member of the Fire Department. I hold an officer position. And I kind of have to balance my position to ensure that I'm not overstepping. You know, as a fire member, I respond to fire calls and everything like that under the direction of the chief. So definitely, this one, this one was a little bit of balancing act in trying to make sure that I was doing the right thing. So just to continue on really quick, at the end of December, I was pretty to, I had the opportunity to respond to a medical call. And we had some, the EMS service, as chief pointed out earlier in the meeting, the calls were 85 for EMS and 126 for fire. That's almost 50% kind of given page. So I had the opportunity to respond on a medical call and one of the pieces of equipment was malfunctioning. We were there without the ambulance service. That provides coverage for the city. There's only one ambulance in the Golden Dale area. That's Golden Dale Medic. They were not available the next hand- They were not available, the next ambulance was coming from Dallasport and had over twenty minute response time. So the only service and the gap in coverage there is being provided by the fire department and its volunteers. So as I went there and we had a malfunctioning piece of equipment, that's where I kind of decided that this was a little bit bigger and as a council member, I could not stand to allow this to continue and take place. So I made a call to the mayor, I have not heard back anything directly as to what resulted, but as I looked through, through the budget and everything, the fire department used, the city used to contract services out of Rural Seven Fire to provide that gap in coverage. For several years now, the fire department started building their EMS site, they have volunteers that have went through EMS training and it's great because as I mentioned, there's a gap in, in coverage from the EMS agency, they have to cover the whole county and move along to where the calls are. So I contacted the mayor about this and this piece of equipment, this particular piece of equipment runs about the two, twenty thousand dollars. It has a cardiac monitoring device, blood pressure cap, you know, it's one, that large machines that we see EMTs carry along, we see it on TV all the time. It has multiple capabilities, it has capabilities to monitoring patients. As I mentioned, the fire department took on the position in filling this gap that our citizens need, you know, service to our citizens, and the budget has not increased for this. So it is my understanding that trying to provide more service with the same budget, you're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul. You're gonna have to leave some things undone, unreplaced to do that. So I contacted the mayor again, trying not to overstep in my position, but definitely saw a gap and a big issue with this and as council member, I could not allow this to happen. So I looked at the budget, there is a budget item that was approved by council for EMS services for five thousand dollars. This budget item has been approved by council for several years now and used to be paid to Rural Seven for providing that EMS coverage that this fire department now provides, our city fire department. So we approved it once again this year, it sits there. It would definitely pay a fourth of this equipment or if not that equipment, it would provide for EMS equipment and services that are obviously needed without dipping into the general fund of the fire department that buys other equipment that is equally or even more than this necessary for the fire department side. So I'm not sure, Larry, what we need to do to move this budget, it was approved by council for EMS services. It is my belief that it shouldn't be that difficult to move it over to the fire department, advocate it for EMS service continuation, so that this gap in service can be filled by our volunteers and continue providing that urgent, emergent response that everybody needs. You know, we can discuss at a later time what we need to do to get a, to support our EMS company, to get more staffing, but the truth of the matter is that the fire department is responding to calls either alone, waiting for a response greater than twenty minutes, or responding to support the EMS agency with personnel to assist. A CPR call may take ten people to do CPR on scene as per a fire department response. And so I have a couple of questions on the, on the number response is for Noah, the, out of the hundred and, no, eighty-five calls in EMS for 2020, how many times has the fire department actually transported a patient to the hospital?
Phil, you mean 2019, is that correct? Cause you said.
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Okay, so it was, if I, if the numbers are correct, we did transport three patients to the hospital and actually in twenty, wait, Phil, I said that wrong. It is 2020, not 2019, sorry. But 2021, we have transported one patient so far this year.
Twenty twenty-one, okay, and we are, we're like less than twenty days in and there's already been one transport in and because the ambulance service was not able to transport that. So hence, I think that, you know, that again, this is the fire department side, but as a council member, where there's a need, there's a need. That budget item was passed by the council as item number or item name, part of the name was EMS service. So Larry, what do we need to do to help this get resolved and help get the equipment that we need so we can continue providing not just good quality of service, but good quality of care in these instances? Do we need an ordinance to move that item? Or is it just need to be moved to the fire department because it's already approved for EMS? Or do we, you just consensus from council members?
Well, one of the first things I look at is any purchase, capital L purchase over five thousand dollars, or I think it's five thousand dollars, is supposed to be approved by council. So the real starting of this is to look at what you're requesting, how much it costs and whether or not we can get a capital L approval for that particular item.
Okay, well, see, so, let me back up. I'm not, I don't want to request it, that is, that is the department head, so that is gonna be the chief, but I know that for the EMS site, there is money needed there and I definitely don't want to force them to, to take money away from capital Ls or other purchases that are desperately needed at the fire department. So what do we need to transfer that money and then we can figure out, you know, is the items that they are wanting, is it this machine particularly? Is it other equipment? You know, is it a capital L or is it part of just, just the budget? But definitely the EMS needs support of that. And again, full disclosure, I am taking an EMT class because I see the need, the lack in service in our community. So, you know, trying to, trying to step up and fill a gap again, because there's a huge gap.
Well, a couple of things you need to, we need to find out why there is a gap.
So yeah, without capital L and without me trying to purchase an item that, again, that's a department motion, what do we need to do to transfer that and get that under the correct department under EMS as it was approved?
Well, as you were indicating, there is, well, there is a gap in the EMS service, correct? Isn't that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
So we need to find out if there's reasons why there is a gap and then support the reason for purchasing the piece of equipment that you're talking about. And then we'd have to look at how the funding would work. Like you say, there's five thousand dollar on a line item. I don't necessarily look at specific line items when I, when I end the year, when I end the year, I end the year with so much cash to carry over to next year. And I don't necessarily take a look specifically at each line item. I mean, I do, but there are some places where it's overspent and some places where it's underspent, is what I'm getting at.
Okay, so, well, yeah, I mean, there is, so here's the thing, there is a lack, a gap in services. We can have meetings all day long about how we can fill that. Maybe the ambulance service needs more people, they're not gonna hire overnight, they're not gonna double their staff overnight, we can have more people. In the meantime, we're gonna have continued emergency calls, people are gonna still get sick. I personally don't feel like holding a budget item hostage is worth somebody's life, maybe you do? And I'm the politician here, so that should be, you know, my thing. So again, if we're supporting the fire department, if we're supporting what they're trying to do and provide the service, which is not getting into politics of why there's a gap in service, but just filling the gap, what do we need to do to transfer that money that was approved by council as an EMS service to be actually utilized for what the council approved it for? And not somebody's, you know, savings account for whatever might come at the end of the year. It was approved by the council members for EMS service, therefore it should go towards EMS service and not towards a total, how much we spent at the end of the year and where can we get it from, it's not a slash fund.
Well, I'd have to take a look at that and see how we can make that happen then.
Okay, perfect. So since I contacted the mayor on December twenty-ninth, today is the, I don't even know what day it is, but today is not, today is the nineteenth, so we're looking at over twenty days, I have not got a response from anybody as to this. I will officially request, one, for my words to be included in the minutes, officially requesting this item to be on the budget, not on the budget, on the agenda for action. Let me know if you need my notes to include that in there, I believe this is being recorded. And I would definitely like follow up and not like it to fall through the cracks, as many things fall through the cracks when council asks for something. I definitely don't feel that somebody's life is worth dropping it through the cracks once again. I apologize if I'm a little strong coming here, but I've responded to people and done CPR on them and their loved ones, some people have made it back, some people have not. And that is something that I'm not gonna take lightly. The budget item was approved by council for EMS services and as that item was passed under false pretense, because that item has not been paid to that agency that it was listed, we need some answers then.
Okay, we'll have a response for you at the next council meeting.
Perfect. So that is the end of my list of items. Thank, and I thank everybody for their time.
Phil, it's Kevin, I'd like to thank you for all those comments. The number one priority of every government, no matter how small or how large, is the health and welfare of their people. Can I thank you for that presentation?
Thank you.
Next council person would be Mylan Walling.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Talking about the security down there at Econie Park, I just wondered, Jay, would that have a camera down there, would that help?
Well, video surveillance systems are, you know, a vital piece of equipment and they help immensely, cause a lot of times if it's a good system and you can make out, you know, or identify a person through it, I mean, you can't argue video. So yeah, the camera system we've had down there in the past, it's been years, wasn't all that great, but the recording systems in the digital age has been, come around a lot better. So, but yeah, video, video is always good, I mean, cause you just, you can't dispute it. A lot of the grocery stores and businesses have very good systems and we've solved a lot of crimes that occurred at those places or when crimes do occur and we're given that footage, we were able to identify. So yes, video systems can help out immensely.
Yeah, okay, well, something to thank you about, thank you. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
I'd like to go back to our police chief because there were a number of things talked about by Phil on suspected drug activities and things of that nature. And I know the chief and I have even talked about some of the limitations there. Go ahead.
Phil, a lot of the stuff that you touched on, right, if you'd like to give me a call tomorrow, be more than happy to discuss that with you and give you some information that, some things that we are doing, some problems we're having and, you know, staffing, hopefully within the next month, we'll be at full, back at full staff with a new hire and also with Officer Leo Lucatero back to full duty. But any council member, if you have any questions on drug work, drug activity or anything, please give us a call and I can discuss that with you of what we're doing, problems we're seeing and some problems we're having. So I encourage it. So, but thank you for the information and be looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll reach out to you and definitely not my intention to, you know, try and tell you how to do your job, you got to do an awesome job, just needing to bring some attention in so we can continue supporting your guys' mission in whatever ways we can with whatever means we have available to us.
Absolutely, and I appreciate everyone's support, the whole council's support and didn't take it wrong, but I'd like to discuss that with you other than here. Okay?
Thank you, Chief, very much. Shannon?
Yeah, I just have one question for Noah. Are we licensed, Noah, as a transporting agency?
We are not licensed as a transport agency, just what the job was called, but no, it's not a transport agency.
Larry, can you get with our attorney and find out what the liability is that of us transporting patients without being licensed?
Shannon, Shannon, this is Noah again. Don't quote me on the laws, I'm no lawyer, but in the license itself, in emergency situations, there's three criteria is why, where you can transport and one of the major region, reason, excuse me, is because an ALS or BLS transport agency is not available in the area or has a long distance or a long response time. So unfortunately, unfortunately, we do have quite a bit of that right now in the county.
All right, I get that, it kind of sounds more like we have an issue with possibly the ambulance needs to make some adjustments, but I'd like to find out from our attorney what the liability of us transporting patients is before, in case something happens and it winds up costing the city a lot of money. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Shannon. Julie, Buck?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, took me a minute to get unmuted. I just wanted to tell all the members tonight that I'm appreciative of all the comments and discussion, I think that's how we're gonna become, or stay, a good city, so I appreciate Phil's perspective on so many. on so many things, I think he gave us some food for thought. I do wanna put out there that KBH, starting next Monday, will be having a drive-through COVID vaccine setup done at the county fairgrounds, and for information, call KBH to find out about how to get appointments and make it through there, so that's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Julie, that was helpful. Kevin, Phil?
I have nothing, but I would like to second that Phil Durco did a wonderful job tonight, I know he has concerns, and I think the Good Samaritan Act will kind of protect us. It's about saving lives, you do what you can.
Anything further, Kevin?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. On Mayor's comments, one of them, I think you would have noticed tonight, the efforts are being made to keep the council up to date, getting you information before things are appearing on the agenda or appearing before you, and our departments are making a good effort at doing that. There'll be more activities as we go along to, to be able to have that kind of information well in advance, and our council members well informed as they go through. And I'll take up Phil's comments on the, on my not responding, I'm not too sure what the message was, whether you, we and I talked personally, or whether it was a phone message, message. I don't have it on my phone right now, though, and that's why I'm concerned, it might have been lost, but we'll, we'll see, and I'll talk to you probably tomorrow about that. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone on the line for public comment?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. I don't believe we do, but on this point of people being able to participate in making public comments, I had a, a question the other day, a request from a local citizen who would like for us to do our city council meetings on Facebook. Now, I don't do Facebooks, I don't know very much about it, and I've had trouble getting enough information to see whether we can do it, but I'm gonna work with Phil on that because he knows a lot about these systems. What this woman said was that it was easier to use than Zoom, and, but we'll have to see, we'll just have to see, but I'll talk to Phil about that when we talk about whatever it is I didn't answer. Okay, any other people for public comment other than my own? Having none, we'll move to adjournment of this meeting, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, this is Andy.
This is Julie, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, and thank you for a very, very lively discussion, it helps everybody. Thank you, good night.
Good night.